Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Stacy White. Representing District Five, Mariella Smith. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Kimberly Oberman. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue, so we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to the Board of County Commission meeting on May 4th. We're in the boardroom down at County Center, and I would like to welcome everyone. And first, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and our invocation by our chaplain, Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please stand at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Heavenly Father, we thank you for the fine people and causes that will be recognized this morning at this meeting. And as we approach the business section of our agenda, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders, clear our minds, open our minds, and help us to make the right decisions for this county. As always, I pray for members of our armed forces and our first responders. Pray that you will keep them safe and guide them each and every day. And I continue to pray for peace particularly in Ukraine, and I continue to pray for the people of Ukraine. I give these thanks and ask for these blessings in your heavenly name.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I appreciate that. With that, I need to address an issue. On August 21st, the board waived their rules of order to allow the current dais seating configuration to continue during the state of emergency. And however, the state of emergency for Hillsborough County has ended, and we need to address the issue regarding the dais seating. Since renovations to extend the dais will occur during the July meeting, free period, it would seem the best solution is to waive the rules again until renovations are complete. And so I'd like to ask for a motion to waive Rule Four. We have a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Myers and Cohen. And with that, please indicate your vote, because we're actually, yeah. Commissioner Smith is on her way. She got caught in the traffic due to an accident on the way in, so she's fine, but the accident has delayed her arrival, so please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. With that, we have three very special recognitions, and the first will be presented by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner Myers, you are recognized to join the podium.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Good morning, and thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Tiana Richardson, President of Tampa Alumni, Tiffany Chapman, First Vice President of Tampa Metro Alumni Chapter, Audrey Sullivan Moore, Tampa Alumni Social Action Chair and Acceptant for Kappa Iota, Rhonda Flowers, Chaplain and Social Action Co-Chair, Accepting for Tau Iota. These are members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Please come forward. Put two on this side, two on this side. Face me, face me. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated is steep in history, tradition, and bold works that have changed lives for the better in the Hillsborough County area and far beyond. Founded on January 13, 1913, by 22 collegiate women at Howard University to promote academic excellence and provide assistance to those in need, Delta Sigma Theta is about sisterhood, scholarship, service, and social action. Our community is fortunate that Delta Sigma Theta has a powerful presence here. There are two alumni chapters, Tampa Alumni and Tampa Metropolitan Alumni, and there are two local collegiate chapters, Kappa Iota and Tau Iota. Both provides tireless community service and support to our residents. I am proud to honor them and the entire sisterhood today with this proclamation. And I must go all strip to say, as an Alpha Kappa Alpha woman in a part of the Divine Nine, I am truly honored to present this. And I think we all know what the Divine Nine and how we... Oh, Lord. I didn't see Ms., the lady that wears many hats in the cheerleader corner with her red Delta hat on would be Chloe Coney. But the proclamation reads, "Whereas Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated is a private not-for-profit organization of college-educated women committed to providing constructive developments of its members and assistance to local communities throughout the world through an extensive array of public service initiatives delivered through its five-point programmatic thrust." Since its founding in 1913, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated has clearly distinguished itself as an organization that boldly confront challenges of African-American and hence all Americans. Membership consists of more than 300,000 women and 1,000 collegiate and alumni chapters located in the United States and throughout the world. Whereas Delta Sigma Theta's principal purpose are to engage in cultural, educational, and service activity, and to establish, maintain, and encourage intellectual and moral standards. As a service organization, Delta creates initiatives and support organizations aimed at maximizing political awareness and involvement, international awareness and involvement, and whereas in engaging the social action in an integral part of the sorority's mission in addressing each component of the sorority's five-point programmatic thrust that begins by participating in the Women's Suffering March in 1913 and being granted status as a non-governmental organization member of the United Nations in 2003. And whereas the two alumni chapters, Tampa Alumni chartered in 1947, and Tampa Metropolitan Alumni chartered in 2003, along with the two collegiate chapters, Kappa Iota at the University of South Florida, chartered in 1973, and Tau Iota at the University of Tampa, chartered in 2001, provide community service and support to the residents of Hillsborough County. They use their efforts to serve as a vehicle for advocacy that affects social change and public policy. And whereas we congratulate and extend special recognition to the Tampa Alumni Chapter on celebrating their 75th anniversary, their theme is "Living a Diamond Legacy: 75 Years of Sisterhood, Scholarship, and Service in Tampa Bay." Tampa Alumni prize itself on being agent for change, living the legacy of their founders, in practicing the community and making the difference that sets the standards for others. And whereas notable members of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated are Dr. Paulette C. Walker, 25th National President, former State Senator, Arthenia Joyner, the Senator, former Democrat Leader, the Honorable Frances Driscoll, Florida House Representative, District 63, Policy Chair, House Democrat Leader Designated-Elect, the Honorable Charlene Edwards-Honeywell, United State District Judge, Miller District of Florida, and the Honorable Marva Crenshaw, Judge, Florida Second District Court of Appeal. And whereas the 33rd Annual Delta Day at the Nation's Capitol theme, "Making an Impact, Driving Change Through Social Action," the Social Action and Political Awareness and Environment Committee of the Tampa Chapters are convening the 16th Annual Delta Day at the County Commission as a component of the sorority's virtual national May Week celebration. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 4, 2022, as the 16th Annual Delta Day in Hillsborough County, and commend the Tampa Chapters of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated on their years of continued exemplary service to Hillsborough County and its residents. Executed this 4th day of May, 2022, signed by all seven commissioners. Congratulations to the lady that wears criss-minty-cream and red. Okay, come on, come on. Y'all can say something. I'm gonna let y'all have the mic, but it won't be drop, okay, Chloe? You know who drops the mic. We have the day. Okay. Come on, Dr. Richardson. Please share your words.
Thank you. Good morning. We truly appreciate this amazing proclamation for the Tampa Chapters of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, as she stated so eloquently. We are committed to sisterhood, scholarship, and service as well as social action, and the embodiment of our 16th Annual Delta Day at the County Commission truly embodies all of those facets and qualities. We are truly excited, the Tampa Alumni Chapter definitely, to celebrate 75 years of service to the Tampa Bay community, Hillsborough County residents as well, and we look forward to moving forward with fortitude for many, many years to come. Thank you so much for this honor.
Let me step back and give you all these proclamations. So, you know, Hillsborough County, we do it the right way. We have one for the Tampa Alumni, one for the Metropolitan, and we have two undergraduates. And you know, we support our undergraduates very, very well, and we encourage through our Divine Nine that we service all mankind, whatever we do in a community. So to... Let me take a picture.
If you guys, if all of you would like to come back for a photo.
It's just an honor again to present this proclamation to the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and we appreciate all that you do here in Hillsborough County.
And I wear, I wore red just for you guys today. Thank you very much for all of your service to our community. That is amazing, and thank you, Commissioner Myers, for bringing attention to it and giving us an opportunity to celebrate. With that, our next proclamations are by Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask the following individuals from the 13th Judicial Circuit Court to please join me at the podium. The Honorable Judge Elizabeth Rice, Court Administrator Gina Justice, Chief Deputy of Court Programs Angie Smith, Director of Problem-Solving Courts Julia Schilling, and Case Managers Amy Filbrick, Cheryl Cowens, Jeremy Riley, Steve Miller, Aretha Catchings, Joseph Wigley, Kelly Griffin, Gina Traxler, and Christine Muckergi. And you're all welcome to come up here. Since its founding 30 years ago, the 13th Judicial Circuit Court's Adult Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Court has been instrumental in helping decrease drug-related crimes by giving first- and second-time drug offenders the opportunity to complete a treatment program and avoid having a felony conviction on their records. This drug court has done a phenomenal job in giving these individuals a second chance in life. The success of this program is due to the dedication and hard work of all drug court participants, including judges, prosecutors, and defense attorneys, just to name a few. It is my pleasure to present this proclamation declaring May 2022 as Drug Court Month, and I'm going to read it. The proclamation reads, "Whereas drug courts combine judicial supervision, treatment, and random drug testing with graduated incentives and sanctions, and whereas drug courts are a proven intervention for assisting people who live with substance use and mental health disorders outside of the justice system, positively transforming their lives as they receive the much-needed recovery and stability they deserve. Whereas the courts improve substance use disorder treatment outcomes, decrease addiction and related crimes, and save substantial taxpayer dollars by reducing the number of incarcerated defendants. And whereas drug courts facilitate community-wide partnerships, bringing together public safety and health organizations, and whereas the courts improve education, employment, housing, and financial stability, promote family reunification, reduce foster care placements, and increase the rate of addicted mothers delivering babies who are completely drug-free." Whereas 2022 marks the 30th anniversary of the Adult Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Court, and May is nationally recognized as Drug Court Month, further illustrating the hard work and dedication made by judges, case managers, prosecutors, defense attorneys, treatment professionals, and law enforcement personnel, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2022 as Drug Court Month in Hillsborough County, and urges all Hillsborough County residents to support the Adult Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Court and its staff for their unwavering commitment to the success of drug court participants. It is executed this 4th day of May, 2022. It is signed by all seven of the Board of County Commissioners. And Judge Rice, I'd like to invite you to please say a few words and accept this proclamation on behalf of the court.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. So, on behalf of our drug courts, and we have many drug courts, we are part of the Problem-Solving Courts in the 13th Circuit. I preside over the Adult Drug, and I've rebranded it Recovery Court, because I want to focus on what we're really trying to achieve in the court, recovery and get rid of the drug and the stigma of that, and also our Drug Pre-Trial Intervention Program. I'm so thrilled, and as Commissioner Cohen said, we're celebrating 30 years of drug courts. Not only do drug courts save taxpayer monies, but importantly, it saves lives. I was getting weepy when you're reading the proclamation, because I see these individuals in my court. They are broken. They are subject to trauma. They come with so many issues, and they really do see in our courts hope of a future and better future. So I also want to take this time to thank the team, Gina Justice, our Court Administrator, for supporting us in all that we do. And I have Ms. Julia Schilling. She is the Director of our Problem-Solving Courts. And we have our team members. We could not do what we do without all of our very valuable team. So again, to our citizens of Hillsborough County, thank you for your support. Commissioners, thank you for your support, and God bless everyone. Thank you.
And let's take a picture.
As the team comes back, I would love to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for the work that you do. It impacts human trafficking victims. It impacts mothers that are at risk of losing their children in our dependency courts. The Drug Court gives hope to those that have found themselves in a position where drugs has been an answer, and yet also a lifelong curse that they have to address, and giving the Drug Court the ability to address that crisis in a person's life and work their way out of that is so valuable. So thank you so very much for what you do. I really appreciate it.
No, this is the next one. Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Cohen, you are up again.
Thank you very much. Yes, I am also going to present the next proclamation, and it's our last of the morning, and I'd like to ask Jamil Mays, the Coalition Coordinator for American Bone Health, to please join me at the podium. Good morning. Osteoporosis is a debilitating disease in which the bones become brittle and fragile from loss of tissue. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the prevalence of low bone mass, a precursor of osteoporosis among adults aged 50 and over, was 43% and was higher among women at 51.5%, compared with men at 33.5%. But there is always hope. Scientific research has made tremendous strides in discovering groundbreaking techniques to screen and prevent this disease. This proclamation recognizing Osteoporosis Awareness Month honors those who fight this disease and the scientists who work tirelessly to find a cure. And I am going to read from the proclamation. Whereas one in two women and one in four men in the United States over the age of 50 will break a bone due to osteoporosis in their lifetime, whereas an estimated 54 million Americans have osteoporosis or low bone mass, placing them at an increased risk for broken bones, and whereas more broken bones caused by osteoporosis occur every year than heart attacks, breast cancer cases, and strokes combined. And whereas bone breaks due to osteoporosis can have serious consequences after the first break, and whereas post-menopausal women with osteoporosis are five times more likely to suffer bone fractures in the subsequent year and often remain undiagnosed and untreated. Whereas Florida is home to approximately 4.7 million women over 50 years old, and each day in the Tampa Bay area, approximately 44 osteoporosis-related fractures occur in women aged 65 and older. And whereas Hillsborough County is dedicated to raising awareness about this debilitating disease with the help of partner organizations such as the American Bone Health and those in the Healthy Bones Tampa Bay Coalition, as Osteoporosis Awareness Month is observed annually during May, and whereas Osteoporosis Awareness Month is an opportunity to promote screenings and provide educational resources to inform and empower people to take charge of their bone health. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare May 2022 as Osteoporosis Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to take preventative measures such as screenings and healthy lifestyle choices to reduce or eliminate osteoporosis. It is executed this 4th day of May, 2022, and I'd like to ask you if you'd like to say a few words when you accept this proclamation on our behalf.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of American Bone Health and our Healthy Bones Tampa Bay Coalition, I just want to say thank you to our county commissioners, particularly Harry Cohen, for your support. Our group has over 115 local coalition members representing more than 60 organizations. Osteoporosis is a prevalent problem here in the Tampa Bay area, and I just appreciate the support for the work that we are doing to combat it. So, thank you.
All right. Would you like to take a photograph? I'm just trying to...
Wonderful. What I have next is, and thank you very much, Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Myers, for bringing those items to our attention and highlighting today. It's a great day to celebrate what we do in our community and all the work that's done, not only by our government partners, but also our community partners, and that's terrific. With that, I'd like to move to the changes to the agenda. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Leslie Bennett for being here with us today, and also our hearts go out to Charlene and her family on the death of her mother.
Thank you.
Thank you. First item is A4. This item has been deferred to June 15th, and this item is the agreement with the Downtown Partnership for its Transportation Management Organization. Item A5 has also been deferred to June 15th. This is an agreement with the University of South Florida Board of Trustees and its New North Tampa, New North Transportation Alliance, Transportation Management Organization. Sorry, I couldn't get that quite out. A6 has been deleted. This is an agreement with West Shore Lions, for its West Shore Lions Transportation Management Organization. Item G1 is now a time certain at 10:15. This is to receive a report from Management and Budget Department regarding summary of American Rescue Plan. Item B2 is also a time certain at 10:15. This is to approve the funding of capital projects for sidewalk repair with American Rescue Plan dollars in the amount, not in the amount of $20 million to make repairs to existing sidewalks across the county. Funding for the projects will come from the revenue replacement, $5 million, and negative economic impacts, $15 million, in underserved areas, categories of the American Rescue Plan. We have two items removed from consent for separate vote. Item A7 was removed by Commissioner White. This is to approve a resolution in the form presented calling for an election on August 23rd, 2022, for a referendum of the School Board of Hillsborough County regarding the levy by the School Board of an additional ad valorem taxes for operating expenses as proposed and directed by the School Board and in accordance with and mandated by state law. A13, removed by Commissioner Oberman, is to approve the proposed 2022 federal legislative program. At 10 o'clock, item D1 is to adopt a resolution approving the list of real property inventory appropriate for affordable housing. At G1, item 10, at 10:15, is to receive a report from Management and Budget Department regarding the summary of American Rescue Plan. And item B2, at 10:15, is to approve the funding of two capital projects for sidewalk repairs with American Rescue Plan in the amount of $20 million. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Move approval.
Move approval by Commissioner Kemp, second by Commissioner Myers.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. We will move on to public comment. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment. The Board welcomes comments for citizens of any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time that you address the board that comments be not directly, not be directed personally towards any one commissioner or staff member, but rather towards the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the board and the public. We set aside 45 minutes in the morning immediately following the changes to the agenda. At the discretion of the Chair, the Board can and may again receive public comments at the end of the meeting, but given the sign-up today, I don't anticipate seeing that happen. And there's a way to actually participate virtually, issues should choose to, by signing up 48 hours before the meeting. peeve of mine, and in some respects, it's working out better than I anticipated and many other people who have more experience than I do. Just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cloyd. The next person signed up to speak is attending virtually. That's Ms. Sharon Calvert, speaking to B1. Ms. Calvert, are you available?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Can you hear me? Oh, thank you. Good morning. I'm Sharon Calvert, speaking on Agenda Item B1. During the discussion of this Agenda item and before a vote taken, please ensure county staff provides you and the public the following. One, a cost estimate for work activities the county expects to spend with HNTB, and a breakdown of the total estimate by how much the county wants to spend for each work activity they want HNTB to perform. What Florida statute is governing the hiring of HNTB for the work the county wants them to do? If it's the CCNA Florida Statute 287.055, please ensure county staff cites that statute states it is for acquisition of professional architectural, engineering, landscape, architectural, or surveying and mapping services. If it's 287.055 statute, what engineering or other professional services listed in that statute is the county requesting HNTB to perform? If this contract is not being procured under 287.055, what statute or governing process is this contract being procured under? According to HNTB, their contract would include the following partners. Playbook Public Relations, a PR marketing firm; Valerin, a marketing and communications firm; Counterpoint Messaging, a firm who engages minority voters through media; and Johnson Strategies, a public affairs and strategic communications firm. Will these partners be subcontractors of HNTB, and what work activities does the county expect them to do as part of the HNTB contract, and what percentage of the overall contract does the county expect those partners to perform? I will acknowledge that HNTB donated $15,000 to the 2010 Pro Rail Tax PAC, moving to a far forward, and was associated with Florida's proposed high-speed rail that was repealed by voters and eventually nixed. I hope that the information requested is publicly provided and discussed before any votes taken by this commission to hire HNTB to develop and implement a community transportation engagement program that directly relates to a proposed $18 billion sales tax that the commission recently voted to put on the November ballot. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no other individuals that have signed up for public comment at this point, so Ms. Wise?
Thank you. We can now go to the two items that have been removed for separate vote, the first being item A7. This has been removed by Commissioner White.
Mr. Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll keep my comments very brief. I pulled this item because I just wanted to say that the School Board members that voted to place this measure on the ballot are absolutely out of their mind. Property tax increases are never popular, and this is certainly not a good time to ask for the property tax increase with the backdrop of the inflationary pressures that we're experiencing, gas at over $4 per gallon, the stock market off by huge margins, just a terrible time. They haven't taken the time yet to prove that they can be good stewards of the sales tax dollars that they've received from that referendum. Besides that, I also take issue with the timing that they've chosen to place this on the ballot. They've chosen to place this on the primary ballot. I completely disagree with that. I think it should be on the general election ballot if it's going to be on the ballot at all. So, I'll be voting no on this measure for all those reasons.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too will keep my remarks brief. My daughter is a freshman at Hillsborough High School, so as a parent, I understand the financial challenges the district faces. I'm not questioning their needs. I do have the same economic and timing concerns that I have with the transportation referendum. However, like Commissioner White, an even bigger issue for me is with placing the tax referendum on a primary election when historically the turnout is much lower than a general election. That's why all recent tax referendums have been on a general election. The goal should always be to maximize voter input, and in no case should we undermine the ability of the voters to weigh in, particularly during a tax issue. So, I'm opposed to transmitting this because it significantly serves to disenfranchise nearly 280,000 independent or NPA voters, which are nearly 1/3 of the electorate. And why I say that is if you look at the 2018 election, NPA turnout in the general, in the general election was 46%, and the primary, it was 8.5%. And while it impacts, NPA is the hardest, it still impacts Republicans and Democrats because their turnout for both in the primary was half of what it is in the general election. So, it's hard for me not to see this as an end around voters, or said in another way, taxation without representation. So, in good faith, I can't support moving this forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask our county attorney to clarify what this Board's role is regarding the, this item that the School Board has voted on.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that, Commissioner Smith. This is an action of the School Board to place this referendum on the ad valorem tax in the August primary. The Florida statutes do not provide any discretion for this Board. You're simply carrying out a ministerial act to call the election, which is required by Florida law. So, the action is of the School Board, not of this Board.
Thank you. And to follow up, the school, the elected School Board representatives voted to put this on the ballot. It's within their purview. It's not within our authority in any way. The law says, if they do that, we shall put it on the ballot for the voters to decide. I agree that it will be controversial, and, and the voters will have many reasons to vote pro or con, but at this point, it is up to the voters. It is not in any way up to us. We are required by state law to carry out the direction of the School Board in this, in this item. Were we all to vote no, as, as certain commissioners have indicated they're inclined to do, this Board would be in violation of state law. So, anyone wanting to make a political point about where their opinions lie by voting contrary to state law is doing so, making that political point at the expense of the rest of us who might be trying to carry out our state legislated duty as state law prescribes. So, I think we can do nothing other than comply with Florida state statute, and I think anybody who is, is trying to make a political point out of this, it just, at our expense, is not, not being in the collegial spirit that some have indicated we should strive for. Thank you.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you. Ms. Beck, Commissioner Hagan and myself both spoke about the issue of this being placed on the primary ballot versus the general election ballot. Would you be so kind as to tell our Board and also the public about an Attorney General's opinion that would speak to that issue?
Yes, Commissioner White, I'd be happy to. The statute is very clear that the, the Board has to call the election, but it's, it doesn't specify which timing or which particular date. The Attorney General opinion that you're referencing is actually a, an older Attorney General opinion from 1998 that is relative to the school surtax as opposed to the ad valorem tax, but in that Attorney General opinion, it does imply that there should be, there could be some collaboration with the School Board on the date and would imply some, you know, ability to converse on that.
Madam Chair, if I still have the floor then, given that, I'm going to move, you've said that we have to collaborate with the School Board, or what?
No, it, it does not say you have to collaborate. I'm just offering that it, it's guidance out there. It's not binding on this Board or in this county, but...
Okay, I thought, I heard you say collaborate. In that case, Madam Chair, I'll wait and see if there's a motion on the floor, and I may request to be recognized again at that point.
Excellent. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I, I take the point about which election and, and we might put this on, but I see that as ministerial as well. The School Board, the elected School Board, has voted to put this on the ballot on a certain election for the voters to decide. As, as we've heard, it's our state duty, state mandated duty to, to put it on the ballot. For us to now be second guessing that elected body's decision about which election to put it on would, would have us wading into the pros and cons of the, of the issue, whether which election we think it has a better chance of passing or not. Frankly, it reeks of political gamesmanship and in a, in a, something where we're supposed to have nothing but a ministerial role. And I would urge us all to stick to our state mandated role, stay in our lane, and do what the elected School Board has, to enable them in their authority and not to try to usurp that authority from them in any way by changing the terms and, under which they've elected, they've voted to put this on the ballot. So, I'll make a motion to approve the item as it stands.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, and second by Commissioner Cohen and Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
I think enough has been said and is very clear. Just, I agree with the comments of Commissioner Smith, and I think it's time for us to just uphold our, we've done plenty of reviewing this enough already and to just weigh in here.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
I also agree completely with Commissioner Smith, but I just want to say something additional, as goes for myself. I think that if I voted against this, given the statutory language, I could be subject to a bar complaint. So, I just want to put on the record that I don't see there being any wiggle room in this at all.
Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I just want to be crystal clear. Commissioner Smith made reference to usurping their, their authority. My comments were certainly nowhere near that. It's very simple. I respect the School Board. I understand they have needs and challenges, probably more so than anyone sitting on this dais. That being said, I disagree with their decision, and in good faith and good conscience, I'm not pushing the button for something that I do not agree with. It's no, no more detailed or more complicated than that. I'm not asking to change things. I'm not asking to get involved in, in, in their decision-making, but I disagree with it, and I'm simply not going to push the button for it if I, if I don't, if I don't agree with it.
Commissioner White, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to amend the motion to set the date for the general election instead of the primary election.
I'm going to call that out of order. The resolution actually by the, the School Board is not that. The resolu, the item is to approve the resolution as presented, and the resolution calls for August. So, I'm not sure that we could approve either of those.
Madam Chair, respectfully, I don't believe that's out of order. Our, our county attorney has just told us that there's an Attorney General opinion that would allow us some latitude with respect to the date that this is set.
I agree, but wouldn't that be a request to defer to having the School Board come back with an alternative date? Because this resolution specifically picks August.
So, Madam Chair, you do have broad powers as Chair, but given the makeup of this Board, it, it might just be simpler, given the state of Florida law, to allow him to make his motion and let the Board handle this. The Board, you're correct, the School Board has asked for that date. That's their will, their prerogative, their responsibility under Florida law. The statutes are very clear, and, but I just don't, I, I think it might be more advisable to just simply let this conclude.
Understood, understood. Thank you, Commissioner White, for those comments. So, we have an amendment?
Well, there's not a second yet, but I've made a motion to amend.
Motion dies for lack of a second, and so we'll go back to the original motion. Commissioner White, you're still in the queue? Okay. I will say, while I am challenged by this, timing matters, and I have some concerns about not being in the general election. However, given the statute, the way it reads, and our role as a ministerial process of approving the Board, the School Board's resolution as presented, I feel as though I am mandated to vote in approval of this item. So, with that, could we indicate your vote?
Commissioners Hagan and Myers, your vote, please. Motion carried, five to two. Commissioners Hagan and White voted no.
Thank you. Ms. Wise?
Thank you, and the next item also pulled for a separate vote is item A13. Chair Overman, you pulled this item. This is the federal legislative program.
Thank you, and, and I'll keep this short because it's actually, I'm going to need staff to come back with some recommendations. You know, this Board of County Commission is actually the policymakers for Hillsborough County, and we have a wonderful legislative team as well as legislative experts that work in Washington as well as at the state to assist us in bringing to the, the prioritization of policies that we wish to adopt. Putting it on consent seemed sort of rudimentary, but I think it's important for the Board to really discuss if there are any additional items that would need to be considered. In the backup, it did show, and I appreciate our team's approach, to increase support efforts to receive grants and opportunities through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, and thank you very much, team, for putting that on there. However, I do have an additional item that goes across many federal agencies that I'd like to ask our staff and legislative teams to investigate when it comes to housing standards. Currently, and I'll keep this short, mold is not a requirement for inspecting of a property for safe housing. AC, air conditioning, is not a required thing. Having a window open is, is a requirement for safe housing for, when housing is inspected, not only at the, for our Housing Urban Development Agency as well as possibly within the state of Florida. So, this actually, this issue that I need more research on to see...
And, and I'll keep this short because it's actually, I'm gonna need staff to come back with some recommendations. You know, this board of county commission is actually the policymakers for Hillsborough County. And we have a wonderful legislative team as well as legislative experts that work in Washington as well as at the state to assist us in bringing to the, the prioritization of policies that we wish to adopt. Putting it on consent seemed sort of rudimentary, but I think it's important for the board to really discuss if there are any additional items that would need to be considered. In the backup, it did show, and I appreciate our team's approach, to increase support efforts to receive grants and opportunities through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. And thank you very much, team, for putting that on there. However, I do have an additional item that goes across many federal agencies that I'd like to ask our staff and legislative teams to investigate when it comes to housing standards. Currently, and I'll keep this short, mold is not a requirement for inspecting of a property for safe housing. AC, air conditioning, is not a required thing. Having a window open is, is a requirement for safe housing for, when housing is inspected, not only at the, for our Housing Urban Development Agency as well as possibly within the state of Florida. So this actually, this issue that I need more research on to see how to best approach it, is both a federal and a state legislative item that I'd like to bring back to the board. So while if, if today we want to address approving it as it stands with the request to bring it back with additional research on those items that I'd like to see that impact the safety and the health of our residents in Hillsborough County, but also recognizing that it's a, sort of a missing issue in the future on the federal level, that I'd, I'd like to get support or at least discussion on that, on that item. I'm willing to defer it if, if that's the best item, or best course of action, because the current legislative platform looks fine by me, other than that's omission that I'd like to bring back. So I, I'll pass the gavel. And I'll make a motion to defer this item for staff to be able to research the items associated with safe housing standards that might impact the housing of the residents, both on a federal and a state legislative platform item. Do I have a second?
Motion dies for lack of a second.
So we're good?
The gavel back to you.
Yeah, okay. So, so with that, I don't have, what I do have is the, is an issue associated with the fact that the Environmental Protection Commission oversees mold, mold in, in households and oversees recommendations. However, does not set the standard when a home is inspected or an apartment is inspected, whether it's done by a Housing Urban Development property or whether it's done by our Department of Business and Professional Regulation that oversees multifamily housings that are greater capacity than five units. So they are actually the regulator for that issue. And so I know that there is a need to make sure that we're addressing the health hazards of individuals living in, in, you know, housing that are exposed to mold, and it's nowhere in the checklist for inspection and remediation at this point. So it's looking for solutions to that issue, which is what I would like to, to bring back to the board for consideration. And that's why I asked to not only pull it so that we just didn't approve it, but since this board has to approve our federal legislative platform, I wanted to bring it up for today. Commissioner Kemp, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just would imagine that all the board members are in support of the issue that you raised, that it's extremely important and it's affected for certain many families, especially in Hillsborough County because of the, the kinds of conditions that we have here. So I think it's really important, I'm just not sure about kind of this vehicle for bringing that forward, and I'm thinking it might be better to either be brought forward to have a, future items for our staff reports so we could understand it better, perhaps a, a item that you could bring forward as a commissioner's item and we could explore kind of where to, how to handle or deal with that in, in that better. I just want to encourage, I think it's an important issue and appreciate you bringing it up. I'm just not sure and don't understand enough that this would be quite the place.
Understood. Commissioners Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, I totally agree completely. This is an important issue. We should be definitely exploring. I am surprised to hear you say that EPC regulates, because my understanding, they regulate air quality outside but not inside. And that was something we ran into even at the Gopher issue there with the lead smelting factory. They don't, they don't get inside and regulate. So I don't think they are the regulatory agency that gets inside individual housing units in any way and regulates mold and air quality in there, I'm pretty, pretty sure. But of course, you would have, I'm sure, broad support here to ask for an issue to be brought back to explore exactly how we can get at that and what our purview is, whether that's a, a future item or a commissioner item. I would be supportive of either way. But with that, I'll just move the item before us.
Second.
Excellent. So thank you very much for doing that. And I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposing moving this forward, but I would like to bring back, after some research is done, to the complexity of that particular issue. We have multiple agencies that all have a finger somewhere, but one hand is not necessarily working with the other hand as well as it needs to, to protect residents' health. And that's why I think what we, I will make a, an effort to bring it back, as I've asked staff to do so at a future date, and support the motion to move this item today. So with that, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And we will bring something back as soon as the, the significant amount of research that needs to be done can bring that back at, at a future date. So thank you very much for that. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We're happy to research that. I'm, I'm sorry, it's a good time to probably mention that we did receive word just yesterday from Congresswoman Castor's office regarding federal funding, that we have been selected for two projects, for her community projects. A million dollars for the African American Arts and Cultural Center and a million nine twenty for the Housing and Neighborhood Assessment Project, which is subject to sewer resiliency for Palm River and Progress Village. So those federal efforts are ongoing. We hope that that continues to make it through the process. Jim Taylor sent out an email to all of you this morning, so.
Excellent.
Just wanted to pass that on.
Great news, great news.
Talking about a federal.
Well, that's why having a good solid priority list is really helpful. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise.
Okay. Now you could move to approval of the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
We have a motion by Commissioner Myers, a second by Commissioner Smith. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Ms. Wise.
Very good. It is now ten o'clock. So we can move to item D1. This is a public hearing to adopt a resolution approving the list of real property inventory appropriate for affordable housing. And Ms. Cheryl Howell, Director of Affordable Housing Services, will take us through this item.
Ms. Howell, you're recognized.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cheryl Howell, Director of Affordable Housing. And I'd like to recommend this morning that we adopt a resolution approving the list of real property inventory appropriate for affordable housing pursuant to Section 125.379 Florida statutes and authorize the acceptance of 24 additional properties into the capital asset financial records of the BOCC. The additional properties allow A, Affordable Housing Services to meet the housing needs in the community of the very low, low and moderate income households and expand affordable housing with partnerships to develop rental and home ownership opportunities. There's no fiscal impact associated with this as a di-.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner, the, Ms. Howell, I truly appreciate your partnership in this effort and the board's support for moving additional assets over to the Affordable Housing Department's resources for affordable housing. Not seeing any comments on this item, so with that, please indicate your vote to support item D1.
Motion seconded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Move for approval.
Okay. Sorry, that's what I meant to say. Please, please indicate, please indicate a motion to approve it. My apologies. Commissioner Kemp made the motion and the second came from, oh, I'm sorry, back, the other way around. Commissioner Myers made the motion, Commissioner Kemp seconded it, I think. Right? Okay. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Ms. Wise.
Thank you. We have some time before 10:15, so we can move on to the regular agenda. Item B1, this is to approve a staff recommendation to select HNTB and negotiate work order to provide support for the transportation community engagement. John Lyons is here for this item.
Good morning, Commissioners. John Lyons, Public Works Administration. Commissioners, we're asking you to approve the staff recommendation to select HNTB Corporation and negotiate a work order to provide support for the transportation community engagement. This work will include development and implementation of the Community Transportation Engagement Program that informs and raises awareness about the current state of transportation across Hillsborough County. This effort will include all of our agency partners locally as well, Tampa, Plant City, Temple Terrace, Hart, and the TPO. We will come back within 30 days and present the proposal with more specific detail and proposed cost for the project as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. I appreciate that. Are there any questions or?
Move approval.
Move approval by Commissioner Hagan.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kemp. Not seeing any further discussion. Please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Excellent. Ms. Wise.
Thank you.
Thank you. I know that it's not quite 10:15, so we could move to the appointment of the land use hearing officer. Ready for that? Item F1.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
On your ballot today, we have three applicants listed. The ballot says to choose two, but it's up to you. If you would like to choose one, you may choose two, or you could choose all three. So let's continue with the vote. Commissioner Overman.
Well, Commissioner, could we, I have two, two Commissioners in the queue that have some questions regarding this issue, so before we take a vote, I'd like to recognize Commissioner White.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a memo from Mr. Gormley in our backup that highlights the fact that we are working to perhaps revamp our zoning hearing master process. For that reason, his recommendation to the board is that we simply renew the appointments of the two existing zoning hearing masters, being Susan Finch and Pamela Jo Hartley. That makes perfect sense to me on policy grounds, given that we're right in the middle of doing this work. So for that reason, I am going to move that we adopt staff's recommendation as indicated in that memo.
We have a motion by Commissioner White. Do we have a second? Do we have a second by Commissioner Hagan? Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I understand the staff recommendation and the policy that Commissioner White just spoke to about holding up until we work our way through the changes that we're working on to the whole process. And in fact, I'm, you know, very excited about the changes that we're working so hard on with the whole zoning hearing master process. But I, I think it's important to have at least three rather than just two zoning hearing masters for a couple of reasons. In fact, we have historically tried to maintain three or four zoning hearing masters for good reasons. One of the main reasons we have historically had more than two zoning hearing masters is that when you have only two, it's easier for applicants to choose their application date and aim for whichever zoning hearing master they think will be most favorable to their particular position. And this is a practice known as forum shopping. And it's stock and trade for attorneys to work to get the judge that they think will be most inclined to agree with their arguments. And another reason is, and we've seen this in recent history, when we've gotten down to only two zoning hearing masters, it becomes difficult for either one to take a holiday or to attend to any emergency or health issue when there's only one other zoning hearing master to take on their workload. And, and finally, I feel that it's important for our county to keep our promise of hiring the best qualified zoning hearing master candidates who applied. We advertised the position. We got three good qualified applicants, and I think we should follow through in offering the position to those three and not hold anyone out. I think that would be unfair. So yes, we're in, in the process of making major changes, but in the interim, we need at least three good qualified zoning hearing masters. We have three good applicants, and I feel we should appoint all of them. And, but because we're working on major changes, I think we should appoint them all for a one-year term. And so that's my substitute motion.
All right, we have a substitute motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second? The motion dies for lack of a second. Back to the original motion, which is to, could you restate your motion, Commissioner White?
Yes, it's to adopt staff's recommendation as indicated in the memo in our backup material.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion. I was gonna say, I think there was already a second. I'm just trying to remember who. Commissioner Hagan, actually, made the second. Okay. We have a motion on the floor to adopt the staff's recommendations. And with that, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Smith voted no.
Madam Chair, may, may I ask a question of the clerk staff?
Sure.
Before item F1A, what was the item that we voted on?
B1.
B1, and what was the vote count on that?
For B1, I show seven to zero.
Okay. I hit the wrong button. Can I have my vote re-recorded or do I, do you need to entertain a motion to reconsider B1?
Um.
You have to be on the.
I'm gonna ask the attorney.
You have to be on the prevailing side to reconsider.
I was on the prevailing side, accidentally.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, wait, you voted for it, but.
So you, you would make a motion to reconsider.
I, I, I would ask the board to.
Okay, do we need to do that?
Give me the chance to motion or reconsider.
So, so we, we've addressed the land use issue by accepting the, the, the staff's recommendation, and that is to appoint the current two at this point, correct? So that's, we're done with that. So now we can vote to reconsider B, B1. B1. Do you want to make a motion to?
Yes, I move to reconsider B1.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner White, a second by Commissioner Cohen and Hagan. Please indicate your vote for reconsideration.
Motion carried, seven to zero. And according to our protocol, would we address that reconsideration at this time?
So you've already moved to reconsider. Now you could entertain a motion on B1 now that you're reconsidering it.
Okay, so we're gonna reconsider item B1 if.
Make a motion to.
We make a motion to reconsider? Move approval? By Commissioner Kemp?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cohen. Seeing no further discussion, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner White voted no.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Now back to normal. Thank you very much. Ms. Wise.
Be careful, Commissioner White. I wish that had taken about another minute, however. But maybe we can lead into.
Well, that clock on the wall says to 10:15, so.
It sure does. We're going with that. Alrighty, and I'll speak slowly. We have two more items, and they are related. Item G1 is to receive a report from management budget regarding the summary of American Rescue Plan. And Commissioner Overman, you asked for that before any future American Rescue Plan allocations were made, which is why we have item B2, which is an allocation for American Rescue Plan for sidewalks. We're having the report come before item B2. And is, just as a summary, this is part of what you have in your backup and for the public's knowledge in every agenda, because we have been very transparent about the breadth and depth of the allocations that we have made with CARES dollars as well as with American Rescue Plan dollars. But this will give Tom Fessler to go through and go through the summary that you have been provided. So with that, I think we're at 10:15. Item G1 will turn it over to Tom Fessler.
Excellent. Excellent. Mr. Fessler, before we get started, as Commissioner Wise, I mean Administrator Wise indicated, I did ask for a report on the ARP budget request to address the prioritization of remaining ARP dollars in line not only with the needs of our current economic conditions that have been exacerbated by the disruption of our residents' ability to recover from the impact of the... As a consequence of the housing crisis that we're in right now. And when I did ask that, I thought it would be wise to remember back in September, which we refer to in our plan, not only for this item but the following item, that we had set certain parameters and certain benchmarks for achieving certain items in line with the American Rescue Plan. For example, in that plan was the issue associated with mitigating homelessness through affordable housing and relocation assistance. That was done through the CARES dollars and the ERAP dollars. ARP money was specifically designed to address struggling neighborhoods as well as those that are being priced out and displaced by alarm... At out alarming rates. In addition to that, in that presentation in September, we set an estimated budget range for affordable housing in the effort of... In the area of 25 to 35 million. And we also addressed in that same report to the need to address negative economic impacts. For example, summary of the things that are under that category are workforce development, mitigation of pandemic exacerbated homelessness through affordable housing, assist vulnerable qualified census tracts through tailored services, support of our nonprofits, which we've done very, very well, and I'm glad to see that. But the budget range where that... Within there has been 61 to 92 million, and I appreciate that effort. The item G1 shows currently available funds that we have already allocated and actually dedicated in the area of affordable housing at $2.84 million as opposed to, you know, of the $285 million that we receive of American Rescue Plan dollars. So when I asked about the ARP monies that were remaining, considering that I previously was of the understanding that as we develop this plan, that a range possibly going for affordable housing could be in the 25 to 35 million dollar range. You know, when we approved sort of our overall framework for ARP dollars and other additional dollars, I thought maybe we would have more than $2.84 million, less than 1% of our ARP dollars, if my math is maybe correct. So when I did ask to see, you know, what's remaining, I needed to go to affordable housing to be in range with what we need, especially since we have families that are literally finding themselves couch surfing in order to avoid evictions because they do not have places to go when they are notified that their rent is increasing at, you know, $600 to $800 a month. I know we get a lot of emails regarding sidewalks. We've been getting those since I got elected in 2018. That's nothing new. But what we're seeing right now in Hillsborough County and specifically in the entire Tampa, St. Petersburg area is the highest percentage increase in the country when it comes to rents. The multifamily report that came out recently by MilChap, which unfortunately I don't have it handy, I did bring it with me to pass out around the board, but it's not on my desk at the moment, and I apologize for not having it handy. But that report shows that the highest percentage increase of rents in the country is in the Tampa-Hillsborough area. And part of that is a result of the fact that we have such a low inventory and we have a low average median income as compared to the rest of the country. So it has exceeded our ability for our working individuals, people who work as first responders, people that work as teachers, and people that work as our military. I'm going to miss the meeting on Tuesday, the land use meeting on Tuesday, because I've been asked by the Vice Commander at McDill to come meet with them to address their housing inflationary crisis that we're experiencing in Hillsborough County. It's affected their most junior airmen, soldiers, sailors, and Marines the most. Currently, junior military families with children have been priced out of specifically South Tampa, but anywhere else, and have to drive approximately 20 to 30 miles to be able to get to McDill. Those individuals are required by law to move to the Tampa Bay area where they have insufficient assets, given our current multifamily rates or rental rates in Hillsborough County. So when I ask this board's support for investing in affordable housing and in housing efforts, there's a very important reason for the second-largest employer in Hillsborough County to be able to answer their question when they're asking me, how are you addressing our affordable housing needs in Hillsborough County? So this item that Mr. Fessler will be able to provide to us will help us understand what the plan looks like for the remaining 63 million or almost 64 million of the ARP monies. And I'll hold there. Thank you, and you're recognized.
Thank you, Commissioner. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. Morning, Commissioners. Just want to share a document with you. This morning, Commissioners, as Commissioner Overman indicated during the future issue section of the last agenda on April 20, the board did request us to come back and give an update on a summary of where we are as far as American Rescue Plan funding and commitments of that funding and additional items that have been identified to come back to the board at a future point in time. Today, I just wanted to go over and kind of give you an update of where we are. On September 1, 2021, you did approve an American Rescue Plan investment plan. That investment plan did include some potential options for use of the funds. We did indicate in that report that while that... While those options were included in the plan, some of them would happen, some of them probably would not, and there would be some additional items probably identified that would not be in the plan. But the plan identified some guiding principles that we've been following. Going over kind of the commitments to date, you can see on the left side of the page here, we've got items that were all approved and brought to the board on a regular agenda and approved by the board. The first item is $75 million related to septic-to-sewer conversions and water connections. 70 million of that were in the areas of Ruskin, Wyomama, Gibson Tenon Palm River. Those will cover approximately 4,000 properties in those areas. And then there is $5 million that has been committed to a program up in the university area for water connections and septic-to-sewer connections that we hope will impact at least 1,300 properties. The next item, stormwater... The next item, road resurfacing. On the road resurfacing, that was $40 million that was approved. That was for approximately... To resurface approximately 287 miles of roadway. And we did make sure that when we went through a process of identifying where those... That resurfacing would take place, that it did cross the entire county. The third item here is fire rescue replacement stations and alerting system. The replacement stations, which are approximately $18 million, are in Palm River, the Arndale Station, and a station on Gunn Highway. We also committed $3.6 million to the acquisition of an updated and the latest technology for a fire station alerting system. We've got stormwater improvements, $17.5 million. Those were improvements that were in the Palm River area and then also in some other areas across the county. As far as hospital funding, the board did make a commitment to three different hospitals. Those hospitals were St. Joseph's, Advent Health, and Tampa General. Those were for 77 COVID... 77 beds that provide some COVID capacity and also for some other health initiative, including an infectious disease clinic. The next item, food insecurity, $15 million. $10 million of that is for us to work with our nonprofit partners to provide actual additional food to the residents of Hillsborough County based on demand that has exceeded historical demand based on COVID activities. $5 million we also committed to Feeding Tampa Bay to assist them with their construction of their new facility, which will be in excess of $50 million in excess of 200,000 square feet. The board did commit $5 million in support of that project to help expand services in Hillsborough County. We have, as you can see, staff pandemic effort response, our staff efforts for pandemic response, $10 million. Constitutional officers, this is for the tax collector, for the clerk of the circuit court. There were some significant... Are being some significant technology upgrades in the court system that the clerk had requested and also in the area of the tax collector, then they each had requested some facility improvements also. We've got our nonprofit safety net program. We had that under the CARES Act. We're kind of... We rebooted that under the ARP. We are working with the community foundation on this program, and they have been doing a really good job for us. As of this week, we have made 177 awards. Those awards range from $2,500 to $30,000. And we've, out of the $5.5 million, have gotten awards out in the amount of just around $3.5 million. The next item here, we did go through, and the board approved us going through a process with our departments to identify needs. Through that process, we identified some cybersecurity needs, which is consistent with the ARPs. The American Rescue Plan Act specifically mentioned cybersecurity as something that is a priority within the act. We've got some senior fitness equipment at various senior centers that was approved for outdoor senior fitness equipment. And then finally, we are assisting and made a capital contribution to the University of Florida IFAS Gulf Coast Research and Education Facility. They are in the process of developing a facility that will conduct research on artificial intelligence in the area of food production. The next item, community-based step-down facility, is one you recently approved. This relates to serving individuals leaving the jail for mental health services and also for substance abuse. As Commissioner Overman mentioned also, we do approve one project in the area of affordable housing for $2.84 million, Youngstown Apartments. That was a project that was targeting 36 units for that. And then finally, mental health. We did have a nonprofit partner that we're working with, Tampa Bay Thrives, that will provide behavioral health and support and counseling services. After considering all those commitments, we have approximately $64 million that has not yet been committed. We do have one item on the agenda today. It says 514 agenda, that should say 54 board agenda, which is $20 million for sidewalks. The $20 million for sidewalks, 15 million of that is targeted specifically to underserved areas of the county. And the request today will ask, you know, ask you to allow us to bring back the list at some future... Some point in the future of the actual projects. There is a plan to bring back also $24 million of additional affordable housing projects. We've identified two projects that we would like to pursue. Those would provide for 129 units. Those projects are located... One of those projects is located out by Bush Gardens, and the other project is in the Sulphur Springs area. So we will be bringing an item back shortly to ask you to approve those two... Funding for those two projects. And then finally, the sheriff has also made a funding request. $4.5 million of the $7 million that you see here is related to setting up or establishing and facility improvements for a mental health pod at the jail. So it is another mental health-related request. And then finally, we do intend to bring back a smaller item, $3 million for parks. After all that's considered, that would... What we are intending to bring back is another $54 million, leaving approximately $10 million that at this point, we would recommend, you know, at some point, we need to spend the funds, but at least in the short term, we're recommending maybe taking a pause and leaving those funds in reserves for the short term, just in case any other COVID-related needs were to show up. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Move to accept the report.
Thank you. We have a motion to accept the report.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner White. I need some clarification, because when we accept these reports, are we accepting the plan as presented?
No, Commissioner, you're receiving the report. It's just a report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay. So I just want to say before we vote that while the American Rescue Plan commitments have been discussed in the past, we've approved the plan for spending, and then it ends up on an item for discussion, and we approve the project. This report was going to occur after our vote to vote on the sidewalks. And don't get me wrong, I know we need to invest in sidewalks. That's why... Why we put a referendum on the ballot to invest in transportation. And those monies cannot be used to address our housing crisis. So using one-time funds out of our American Rescue Plan that specifically initially, when we talked about, you know, what the American Rescue Plan dollars were going to be invested in, and I was given a range between 25 and almost up to 92 million, and all I'm seeing on here is about 28 million towards affordable housing. I'm a little challenged in the prioritization on how we've moved forward on dealing with the families that are literally couch surfing right now. I know a lot of our Commissioners in the individual districts get a lot of calls regarding sidewalks, and I get it, because you're going to get those, you're in that district. But I get the calls from the families on a daily basis that are worried about losing their kids because it's considered child abuse when they don't have anywhere to live. And it's happening. We have had over the last year and a half, two years, very high levels. And if the staff doesn't, before we receive this report, I did have some slides that I wanted you to kind of see what it looks like across Hillsborough County before we address the next item. We have... The communication's going to assist me with the slides. In Hillsborough County, over the last year and a half, you can see the concentrate... If you'll go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Stop there if you can. These are the areas where there's a range of filing counts of evictions by zip code that shows between 1,000 to 2,000 evictions in the areas. The dark orange shows the concentration of areas that have had the highest number of evictions. The next highest are actually in Southeast County. And then the next highest is actually in the northwest... Northeast side of the county with a small section in the town and country area. But as you can see, there's still a wide range of a high number of evictions. The next slide will show you the impact on communities. The next slide shows you the density of rental assistance density. So the very large green dot shows you where people in our community have asked for rental assistance, whether that be through our housing assistance program, whether that be through our veterans, our senior elderly housing assistants. And it shows that the largest areas are really in the middle of the county, but also includes the eastern part of the county, southeastern part of the county. The big blue dots show the number greater than 75 to 111 of child removals. So it shows you not only where the eviction occurs, but also where the concentration of children that are being removed from their households. And oftentimes, that's a result of a pending or the impact of an eviction. The next slide will show, if you don't mind, please. Greater than 75 to 111 children have been removed from their households, and the correlation between where evictions are occurring and where children are being removed is important to recognize the impact in our... removed is important to recognize the impact in our communities. When we are looking for ways to address the impact of the pandemic, what I'm showing you isn't necessarily a new, but it has clearly been impacted by the increase in rental rates that Hillsborough County, as well as the Tampa, St. Petersburg, MSA, as illustrated in the report that I did get delivered to you a few moments ago, where we are experiencing the highest percentage increase in rates in the country. I think it's important to recognize that while this report does show us a plan, and I'm willing to receive the report, I'm not able to really support the current recommendations that are made for the remaining 63 million. I'll stop there. We have a motion to accept the report. We have Commissioner Kemp in the queue.
Just for a matter, a point now to be made about, because I'm actually extraordinarily proud of the commitment that we have made that is unparalleled year by year by year to affordable housing and how we have vetted that in the way to get the most from the dollars. And I think it's been a really extraordinary effort on the part of staff to do that. I think it's something for us to be talking about how much we have done that and the dedication of our dollars in a way that I can tell you, my first two years on the board, this was not true. We could not get support for giving anything from the county. And we've turned that into $10 million a year direct, which I, you know, don't know that that's elsewhere, but Ms. Wise, I think you're probably the most familiar, just in terms of the other, besides our commitment as a county, and I think, you know, Commissioner Overman mentioned the $28 million from this, but it, as well, the other kinds of things we are doing, which are extraordinary, I wish that, if you could address those.
Sure. And it truly has been transformational. We have received contributions to affordable housing from this board, from our general county revenues, as you've mentioned, at least a 10 million. Cheryl Howell presented to you that last year alone, we provided $54 million from various sources, but that doesn't even include the other federal dollars, which are at one-time dollars certainly, for example, the emergency rental assistance program. The last I checked, that was up to $58 million just from that purpose. So we're receiving dollars from other purposes. We always, it's very, you know, specific, it must be used for housing. And perhaps we can circulate for you again, just so you're aware of the commitment you all have placed on this. The problem we know is massive. We do acknowledge that and we want to do whatever we can to improve the lives of our citizens, but we have made a huge commitment toward that. And those are just some of the examples for you.
Also, in terms of that, I think, I hope everybody on this board is very aware, as well as staff and every, I mean, everyone, that Hillsborough County and Tampa are pretty much leading the nation in a very bad way in terms of rent increases for people, in terms of, you know, difficulty, the cost of new housing. I mean, I could give several examples of people close to me that have been affected by this, this runaway train that we have here that's really hitting here. And it's hitting the entire nation, but it's very, very terrible in, especially in Hillsborough County. Part of the reason is, we know, 10,000 homes have been built by private, or have been bought by private companies so that, you know, new, first-time homeowners can't get in there. They have these private companies outbidding them instantly with cash. They, they can't make the sales. You know, the, they have to, they can't afford to even get involved if you haven't already purchased your home. You're, it's a really, really difficult situation for anybody that has a median income or even far above median income to do that any longer. We definitely have an affordable housing crisis. We've had it before, but now we have this speculation with these private companies that have done this. I understand that there's huge vacancy rates in the area. And not only that, I mean, what would, why would an apartment that's rented that has been around for 20 years, all of a sudden have to go up by 50%, 100% in their rents? It doesn't make any sense. It's not the market doing, forcing that to happen. But it isn't something that taking $4 million from sidewalks is going to make much of a dentin, unfortunately. And I feel like we are, I feel like the staff has done a tremendous effort in really looking at what we said were our priorities, and that included affordable housing, but that included also children being able to walk to school without getting hit by cars, walking along really dangerous streets. It is incredibly important and not something to, you know, to not be considered. As well as feeding Tampa Bay, you know, people are having trouble paying their rents or finding any place, but they're having, as well, apparently, very, in great trouble making for their budgets any longer for food. And that's, feeding Tampa Bay has been extraordinarily important. Healthcare, if you're not, if you can't make it through the pandemic or get healthcare, you can't, you know, the, the issues of rent or even the issues of food are not there. So I just, I think it has been an extraordinary, and I'm proud of the report as it stands now, I'll just say, it's been an extraordinary effort, I think, by this board to put a focus on, on some of the issues that have not been dealt with for decades, many decades, like septic and sewer conversion, the sidewalks, our infrastructure, our affordable housing, our food insecurity, our healthcare. It's been an incredible effort to make sure that that money is spent very, very carefully as well, which I think has been something to be lauded. And I do think it's been controlled by, or has been allocated in terms of the philosophies and priorities that this board has expressed in a very strong way. So I'm, I'm just going to say, I, I mean, we are only talking about accepting the report as we've made clear. This can still be dealt with at another time, but I would like to speak up for what we have, the enormous dedication we've made to affordable housing. I don't think that we can, the problem is way larger. I mean, even if we paid people's rents for right now, what do we do about the permanent basis that all these rents have been increased? What, what do we do about the housing market? I'm, I'm, you know, it is, I think, beyond the resources of this board, of any one category. And I agree with you, it's breaking my heart to see this. It's, it's just terrible. And I, I, you know, we have, I think it's going to have to be some resolves by the federal government, by the state of Florida, which has been terribly remiss in this. And maybe there, you know, if we can have them, as we've mentioned too many times, stop sweeping the Sodowsky funds, start to invest in affordable housing as it should have been done for a long time. But I feel like we have, actually, early on, before this became a crisis, this board made an investment and has continued to, that has been very significant. So I, I want to make sure, communicate that we have, that we are very concerned about that, doing all that we can, and it's important that we keep moving in, in that direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Kemp, I don't know if you left me anything to say. You've said so much that I concur with. But one of the things I'd just like to bring out is maybe that we consider having a moratorium on the rent increases because, to look at that as a board, because you have from three months to six months, we just have rent increases throughout the nation, particularly here in Hillsborough County. In my district, I hear it all the time, I received a call yesterday, I hear it all the time in my district about sidewalks. And when the elderly cannot walk on the sidewalk and have to walk in the streets, then I'm going to push for the sidewalks because that is a huge issue in my district as well. So if we can, Pompson and County Attorney Christine, you might be able to help me with this. Is this something that we can look at as a moratorium that the county can put in place like the city of Tampa for three to six months of not having an increase on rent?
I think that the, the city of Tampa is looking at that issue now. It's quite complex and actually requires a referendum, I believe. So what might be the best in this situation would be to direct us to, or just ask us to research it and provide you the framework about, you know, what legal framework would, would provide and what options there are, and we'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Can I ask what now or does it have to come back in the future?
No, you can, I'll just assume you asked for it and we'll prepare it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. And I actually was going to ask that we would investigate what the city was doing as well as a future item. However, this state statute does prohibit us from having an increased rent. Really what that is, is to just delay the inevitable of the rent going up by asking for more notice to allow the tenant to have an opportunity to find somewhere else to live. And with very, very limited inventory, all that does is give them more time to try and find somewhere that we don't have in our county right now. So Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. And I want to start out by saying that Commissioner Overman, I think your, your passion for affordable housing is really wonderful and given the circumstances that we're in right now in this country, really, really well placed. And I also want to say to Commissioner Kemp and Commissioner Myers, thank you for, for what you just said. Commissioner Kemp particularly pointing out the money that we've already spent on affordable housing, it's not enough, but it certainly shows that, that we have put major emphasis into that area because we know what a problem it is for people. Sidewalks are our next issue that are going to come up, but since they've been bled together, I want to say a few things about them. Commissioner Overman, you mentioned, you said people are worried about losing their kids because of couch surfing, et cetera, and you showed the map of, of evictions and child removals from homes. I didn't come prepared with a map this morning, but I didn't want to put one up that shows the number of people that have been killed by cars because we don't have adequate sidewalks or infrastructure in this county. What I can tell you is that this morning, I went to a sidewalk stompers event before this meeting because today is National Bike to School Day. And I heard from parents who are worried about losing their kids because they're afraid they're going to get hit by cars on their way to school. They, they give out this whistle to people, to the kids that walk or bike to school. And I thought this was a really cute thing until I realized that they're giving out a whistle so that the kids can whistle before they cross the street. That is how bad it's gotten, that people have to whistle before they, they cross the street. So I just feel that it is critical that we not rob Peter to pay Paul. You, you mentioned earlier that the emails have kept coming, it's not a new thing. You're absolutely right. Year after year after year, we hear that we are number one, number two, always in the top 10 for bicycle and pedestrian fatalities in this country. And it is just a statistic that we have got to overcome. I know that a lot of us are hoping that if a transportation referendum passes in the fall, there will be a lot more money available to make these safety improvements. But this $20 million, which is a drop in the bucket for a county this size, is still really important for us to do just to keep making incremental progress in the places where the problem is the worst. And I just want to close by mentioning that, you know, we, we just completed our equity study. We all made a commitment to making decisions with equity in mind, and three quarters of this money is going to go to addressing sidewalks in the most disadvantaged communities in the county. So I think that, that while the affordable housing crisis is acute, it's, it's really, really important for us to continue to deal with. And again, I, I really want to thank the staff for putting together this great chart because I've been, been, I've been using it. I use it as a talking point when I'm speaking and people are really impressed to know where we've put this money. And I think it speaks to, very well to us as a board, like was said earlier about what our values are, that this is what we're doing and another 24 million to affordable housing, I think speaks very highly to our values as well. But this money to sidewalks is important. We have got to show that we are committed to making safety improvements in this county. We are a state where children that live within two miles of a school are not eligible for free busing anymore. They are walking and biking to school, sometimes with no sidewalks, sometimes on sidewalks that are in horrible condition to the point where they have to have a whistle in order to cross the street. So I am, am very much in favor of moving on the next item, moving forward with the sidewalk allocations the way they are and continuing to work on the affordable housing problem because it's going to require our attention clearly going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Yes, and I just want to briefly add that I'm very proud to be a member of this board, given our discussion today. I greatly admire your helping to inform us about affordable housing and the nature in detail of this crisis. We all understand it's a crisis, but you brought forth some very important points today, Commissioner Overman, in, in the nature of it. We have all been very supportive of changing this, this county's priorities to, as Commissioner Kemp noted, to have much more priority for, for funding affordable housing in, in our county budget. And I have, at every turn, been a proponent of directing large parts of that funding to the most needy, as you were pointing out, the, the people on, on the verge of eviction, the people who are facing eviction, to those people that are 50% and below AMI, it's always been a priority of mine and we've been able to do that in our funding. There is, we face some very difficult budget decisions at, at every turn, whether we're dividing up even BP oil spill money or ARP money or our general funds. We have to decide on trade-offs. We have to end up giving just as much as we can to each of the important factors in our county. No county, no municipality can solve the affordable housing crisis we're facing with any, any kind of targeted budget. We, we can't solve it. We have to, we have to just continue begging our state legislators to stop sweeping the Sodowsky funds and give us those funds for affordable housing that the voters have approved. We need continued help from, from our federal partners. But there are a lot of aspects to the affordable housing crisis that we are addressing in our, in our policies and in our budget, like food insecurity, you know, and the nonprofit safety nets and the, the rental assistance program, Ms. Wise noted, and actually providing safe routes for children to walk to school, providing those safe sidewalks so people, children are not in the drainage ditches with weeds up to their knees and God knows water and vermin in the, up to their ankles. That helps reduce the need for a $10,000 a year expenditure for a car for a family if their children have a safe, safe routes to school. And for our seniors in Sun City Center and disabled people and people walking sidewalks with a cane in a wheelchair, it is, it is really important for us to provide for those people on limited incomes. on limited incomes who have given up their car for whatever reason, safe roads to, safe sidewalks for them to travel on without tripping and breaking a hip. So we have to do all these very important things. We have to decide the proportion at which we're going to do them, and I too am very, very pleased with our staff's very hard work on helping us to come up with this menu, this distribution that addresses the very dire, the most dire needs of sidewalks for the disadvantaged communities, the housing for the most dire, and the stormwater improvements where they're most needed, and the septic to sewer conversions where they're most needed. We're not, we're not fixing any of this, but we are really, I think, doing a wonderful job on addressing the most dire needs along a very broad spectrum of our responsibilities. So I just want to say thank you to everybody who weighed in today. I think the entire discussion was, was very, very fruitful. But I am, I'm quite supportive of this distribution that we see before us today. I think it's a product of a lot of work so far. And it's not the only thing, as has been mentioned, we do have other funding for all these needs. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. And I'll wrap this up, and we'll consider the motion to accept the report. And don't get me wrong, I know we need sidewalks. I also know the American Rescue Plan dollars was to make long-term structural improvements in areas that are, you know, economically impacted as a cause, as a consequence of the pandemic. And while I do know we need to increase our safeties, I do know, when my grandson asked this morning if he could ride his bike to school, I said absolutely not, because it's not safe on our roads. That is not what I'm saying. And I do know we've allocated a lot towards helping residents stay in their homes. But eRep is a short-term solution for six to nine months. So at the end of that nine-month period, what's happening is those individuals that we spent money trying to help them stay stabilized is no longer available for that home, and they are actually moving out before they're getting evicted. Or they're trying to take advantage of our Home Stabilization Eviction Mitigation Program that helps defend them in court when they have a permanent record of eviction on their record for the rest of their lives. Having additional inventory of housing is critically important. And while I'm not opposed to having, and I'm thrilled that Cheryl Howell brought to us two projects that could go for that $24 million, she very rapidly said, well, you want money for affordable housing? You've got dollars here, I'll find you the projects. And literally in short order, she found us two projects that we can invest in. But I would rather have 45 million. Because while the 20 million going to sidewalks, as Commissioner Cohen has said, is a drop in the bucket, 20 million additional dollars for affordable housing would provide housing for a lot more people. But that being said, we can address that in the next item because while Commissioner Kemp mentioned that we can address that at a later date, later date is the next agenda item, where we approve the $20 million for sidewalks. So later date is today, and I'll stop there. Thank you. So would you take a vote to approve reception of the report, please?
Do we already have a motion?
Yeah, we do.
It's been a while.
I know.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Ms. Wise.
All right, thank you. The next item is Item B2. This is to approve funding for capital projects for sidewalk repair, an amount of $20 million. And this is to use $5 million from the Revenue Replacement Fund, and then $15 million from the underserved areas for negative economic impacts. Tom Fessler will present this item.
Thank you. Mr. Fessler, you're recognized.
Yes, Commissioners, this item is asking you to approve two new capital projects for sidewalk repairs in a total amount of $20 million to be funded with the American Rescue Plan Act funding. It also asks you to approve a board resolution, adding the two projects to the fiscal year '22 to '27 capital improvement program. And finally, it's asking you to approve a budget amendment to appropriate funds consistent with adding the two new projects. If this item is approved, staff will bring back to the board within the next 90 days a recommendation on specific projects to be funded with the dollars. That will be done based on priority listing that we currently have. We'll take a look at things such as making sure that the projects are spread across the county, as Ms. Wise mentioned, 15 million, at least $15 million in underserved areas. And we'll do that in collaboration with the Commissioners and your knowing what the needs are within your, within your specific areas. Also, I just wanted to point out that over, one of the most significant items that we have as far as claims that come to the county is in the area of sidewalks. Over the past 10 years, the county has paid out claims for sidewalk drippings falls of approximately $2.5 million. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to keep my remarks brief. I withheld my comments until this item. However, I do want to echo what Commissioner Smith said. I think it was a very productive discussion during the last item. This has been a priority of mine for years, so I very much appreciate all the comments from board members in support of additional funding. Sidewalk repairs and road resurfacing are by far the two top requests to my office. I want to point out some Commissioner Kemp said, we disagree on a lot of things, but I think on this item, we're on the same page. She referenced children, schoolchildren walking to school and not getting hit by a car. Well, I can tell you, one of the reasons why this, I'm passionate about this, is that we received a call from a lady in a neighborhood whose schoolchildren had to wait in the street pre-dawn to pick up the school bus because the sidewalks were in such bad shape. So this is a serious safety and quality of life issue. We have, at last discussion, I think it was eight to 10-year backlog of needed repairs. Many are quite dangerous. Tom just mentioned, again, that in our backup, in recent years, staffs stated how there's been increased injuries and insurance claims from our horrible sidewalk condition. So funding is desperately needed, and I'm very pleased to move approval on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Kemp and Cohen. Okay, I'm not seeing any other discussion, but I do want to ask a couple of questions. I know we heard we're going to get a list of areas and that $15 million was set to underserved areas. And I just want to get a little clarification on this. Previously, when we decided to spend $35 million on resurfacing roads, I had asked for a map to kind of give us an idea of where that would occur. And as it appeared, when we first looked at the agenda item for ARP funds to address our transportation deficits, as we are today when it comes to sidewalks, we found that 60% of them were actually in unincorporated Hillsborough County in District Two and District Four, which, you know, was good. But the discussion led to, well, if this is supposed to be addressed on underserved areas, we then made the motion to add another $5 million to Commissioner Myers' district, given the maps we just saw at the last discussion, that the most underserved areas oftentimes fall in all of the, all of the districts, but there's a concentration in District Three. So I'm trying to get an understanding of, based on this $20 million that's not going to go to affordable housing like I wanted it to, but is going to go to sidewalks, which I do understand we have a shortfall there. Can someone clearly identify what underserved areas or where the concentration of that $20 million will be spent?
So I don't think we're prepared to show a map at this time because that's going to be done subsequently, and that's why we're going to bring back a separate item that will show the locations. In the interim, however, John Lyons and his staff will get with you all and go over those areas. I've heard, you know, we certainly know where are CDBG areas, but there's also other vulnerable areas. I'll use Sun City Center as an example, where we have elderly as well that we need to consider. So I think John is prepared to go through all of that with each of you.
And CDBG is basically housing money that we use to fix sidewalks, correct?
No, 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 it's CDBG areas that have been designated, that we know that those areas, but there's more areas than just CDBG areas that have vulnerable communities, and that would be appropriate for the $15 million. But I think John Lyons, it's really best to go through that with you, with a map, and go through that with you individually.
Okay. And like I said, I'm not against voting for improving sidewalks. I just know that we have limited opportunities for chunks of monies to address the housing crisis that's urgent at the moment. And we can use CDBG money to actually fix sidewalks in communities that are at risk, and we do on a regular basis. And so I just wanted to voice that. We have a motion and a second to spend the $20 million of the $63 million that is remaining of ARP dollars for this item supporting sidewalks. Okay, do we have, please indicate your vote.
Motion carried, six to one. Commissioner Overman voted no.
Thank you. Ms. Wise.
Sorry about that. Those are all of our items, so all we have are future issues.
Do I need to ask about the housing? Well, Commissioner Myers asked about the rental rate options that are available to this board to address high increasing rents, which actually was, I was going to ask for that too, so I know we're going to need that.
So I think they're actually two different issues. The moratorium issue is a separate issue, and I think what you were referring to is an ordinance that is also under consideration in a couple of communities to add additional time notice wise for rent increases. So if you want to direct us to look at that.
Okay, let's do that as a separate item. That would be very helpful. Thank you very much. And then I'm going to ask that our legislative team work with our legal teams as well as the folks that I'm actually meeting with, with HUD and the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. I'm meeting with them currently to address some of the serious housing conditions, to really uncover whether, what's possible in improving the housing safety or under our rules that require that when someone rents a place, that it be a habitable, safe environment, and to see how that might be incorporated in our legislative platform at a future date. Any other items? Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.